Welcome to a broadcast of the recent Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at 9:30 at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, Downtown Illyria. These are public meetings and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.lorainecity.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners' page, then click on View Agenda.
Good morning, everyone. If you'll please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And good morning, everyone. This is Board of Commissioners' meeting for Wednesday, August 21st, 2019. We actually have two inspirational words this morning. "Do everything possible on your part to live in peace with everybody." That's from Romans. And "Something that is loved is never lost," by Toni Morrison. And we have her dog.
Curious, curious. We have a cute little puppy. He's actually available today, so he's a lab mix. He's available. Come get him. We have seventeen other dogs at the kennel. If this is not your style, if you don't want a puppy. I actually have a puppy right now. It's like having a three-year-old child in my house, but it's a lot of fun. So he'll give you a lot of energy. Take him for a walk. Have fun with him. Check us out on Facebook. Thanks.
Today, we have a proclamation proclaiming February 18th as Toni Morrison Day in Lorraine County. And Anastasia Diamond Ortiz, Director, and Sherri Campbell, Library, Lorraine Public Library.
Anastasia and Sherri, if you come forward, probably the podium there, whichever podium you're best at. I want to thank you for being here this morning. You know, we were all saddened, the Lorraine County community, with the recent loss of Toni Morrison. And we have a proclamation here in the matter of proclaiming February 18th as Toni Morrison Day in Lorraine County, Ohio. Whereas Toni Morrison was born as Chloé Ardelia Wofford, February 18th, 1931. And whereas Toni studied Humanities at Howard, she was married in 1958 to Harold Morrison. Toni made her debut as a novelist in 1970, soon gaining the attention of both critics and wider audiences for her epic power, nearing ear for dialogue in her poetically-charged and richly expressive depictions of black America. And whereas she won the Pulitzer Prize in 1988 for her novel, Beloved, first African-American to receive the Nobel Prize. And whereas the Lorraine Public Library dedicated a reading room and collection of Toni Morrison in 1995. She also had a very profound academic career. She wrote books for children. In August of 2012, Oberlin College became the home base of the Toni Morrison Society, an international literacy society founded in 1983. And whereas Toni Morrison died at the Medical Center in the Bronx, New York City, on August 5th, 2019, from complications of pneumonia, she was eighty-eight years old. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Lorraine County Commissioners, that we hereby proclaim February 18th as Toni Morrison Day in Lorraine County, and it's signed by all three of the Commissioners. Would you like to say a few words about Toni Morrison and a lot of the things that you're doing at the library?
Yes. Hi. I'm Sherri Campbell, Lorraine Public Library. Thank you again to the Commissioners for recognizing Toni Wofford. I've said it before that she was Lorraine's gift. I mean, we've had other gifts to the world, but she is very much still our gift to the -- our particular literary gift to the world. She was a writer, a professor, an educator. She was, I mean, she never forgot, she never forgot Lorraine. She is just, we are just very, you know, we are saddened by her death, but she, you know, had a wonderful, you know, she did have a wonderful, very accomplished life. I believe her family will be pleased by this. I can't imagine they would not. We are very, very honored to accept this, you know, accept this proclamation, and we are thankful, thank you, again, thank you to the county, thank you to Lorraine County. I believe this is a very, it's like, this is a very, this is an honor, and I believe even Toni, who I don't always took a lot of, you know, didn't always love a lot of personal attention, I believe she would have been pleased at this. And thank you, again, thank you very much.
And I also wanted to say thank you on behalf of the library for this. It's amazing that you've chosen us to accept this honor. And I wanted to say that, you know, as you may, if you didn't see the documentary, or you may know, that she was a page at the library, so she actually shelved books and worked at the library for a while. And to me, it's a wonderful testament to the power of libraries. So someone just being around all those books and exposing themselves to all that great literature goes on to do something so great. So it's a wonderful honor, and we will be having, you know, many events between now and February 18th, but certainly something really big on that day. So we will definitely keep you posted and in the loop. Hope to see you there. Thank you.
Great. Sherri, last night, you shared some, a lot of interesting facts, and I know you can't go into all of them, but talk just for a second about the mural.
Oh, the mural, yes. The mural was done, we're not certain by whom. I've been with, the mural was done by the Harris, by a, we believe, Oberlin College student. We haven't been able to find out who yet. The mural is at the Harrison Cultural Community Center. They have painted, if you go to the building, I do recommend it, there's a lot of wonderful artwork around the base of the building. They've taken, they have, the old windows that have been locked off have been painted over. And was actually completed just a week or so before the movie, but I don't believe it was, it wasn't in conjunction with the movie at all. It was just done as an art project, like, we believe, by an Oberlin College student. It is a beautiful mural, it is a beautiful mural. Like I said, we don't know the artist. So that would have been, that's pretty much all I know about that, but I do encourage you all to go look at it because it is a beautiful mural. The family, I showed a photo to some of the family members when they attended the premiere, and they were just, they had no idea, it was just a, they literally had finished it today, that the filmmakers had decided to award, it was unexpected award, of all the ticket proceeds from the documentary. That was a gift from Magnolia, that was a gift from Magnolia, I believe it's Magnolia Films or Magnolia Pictures. It probably would have been an amount of more than several thousand dollars, because I believe about five to six hundred tickets were sold for the film. So that was a wonderful gift from Magnolia to the community, to Harrison, you know, Harrison Cultural Community Center. So again, that's a beautiful, it's a beautiful, like I said, it's just a beautiful, just a beautiful mural, and it's just a wonderful thing. It's a wonderful tribute to her, so we are just very pleased. And if you have never come to see our reading room, I do encourage you all to do so. We'd be at the top of the information desk, and we'd be happy to show you, give you what, if you want to find me specifically, I can give you a tour. I'm probably going to be, I'd like to, I'm going to start preparing some more coworkers to give some basic tours to the room, too. But it's a beautiful room. You know, we can, you can come in and see the art quilt, you can come in and see the, you know, our little, our book collection. There's another piece of art that is from, it's from an artist named John Sokol. That is a Song of Solomon. It's a picture of Toni, but it's all done in words in the Song of Solomon. It's just an amazing photo. You may have seen it on some of the TV, on some of the, on some of the TV pieces that were done at, when she died, so. But I encourage you to come see it, because I think it's a treasure I don't think a lot of people have seen yet. We do have the room locked at this time, but we do open it for certain, some programs. But like I said, just please, please stop by, please just give us a call, and we'll just, you know, happy, be happy to show it to you. We show it to people from all over the world, all the time. Anyway, come on, Lori needs to come see it, too. So we do invite you. So we do, we do encourage you, we do encourage you to come. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'd like to come down and present this proclamation.
Proclamation.
I always listen to podcasts on my way to and from Columbus, and Oprah Winfrey has one, it's called Super Soul Conversations, and her last one was about Toni Morrison. She had her on her show. It's pretty interesting.
And before we move on, just two of my favorite quotes of hers. One of them, kind of inspirational, it was, "If there's a book that you want to read, but it hasn't been written, you must be the one to write it." And the other one is, "You are your own best thing."
Next, Madam Clerk, we have some presentations this morning.
We do. First up is Common Please, Sherri Clauser and Deb Tanci.
Got your cheering section back there for you. Sherri and Deb, good morning.
No pens for you.
I'm sorry.
We're gonna give you a crayon. He's coming.
Well, I'm Sherri Clauser. I'm the Court Administrator from the Common Please General Division.
And I'm Deb Tanci, the Deputy Court Administrator.
We refer to ourselves--
You need to get closer to the microphone.
Closer to the microphone.
We refer to ourselves as the dynamic duo of Court Administration.
For sure.
So for the last thirty years, our county has been able to have probation services from the Adult Parole Authority, as well as the Lorraine County Adult Probation Department. The Lorraine County Adult Probation Department, just as a little bit of history, started with just a chief PO, five officers, and two support staff. Today, we have a department of forty-two. That includes six PSI writers, nineteen officers, four supervisors, five support staff, two drug testing monitors, a jail case manager, an electronic monitoring officer, a program case manager, and a specialized docket coordinator. We have currently two specialized dockets in the county. One is the Recovery Court, one is the Veterans Court, and we are in the process of having a third, which is, which will be a mental health court. Those courts are all supervised by our current probation officers. So we'll come to today, or to 2019. We were notified earlier in the year that the Adult Parole Authority may no longer supervise community cases, community control cases for Lorraine County. At this point, we weren't sure if that was really going to happen or not. We were hearing all kinds of rumors. We heard that the union from the Adult Parole Authority had filed something that may stop that, and we didn't know for sure if this was going to come to fruition. However, in July of 2019, we were notified by the Adult Parole Authority that they would no longer be providing these supplemental services for our county. The, I think there were nineteen counties that were affected by this. There were several counties that did not, that's how we looked when we found out that we were going to have to take over all these cases.
How many cases, did you say?
Well, we originally were told twelve hundred, but it's going to be eight hundred. And then we'll have some additional cases that are considered inactive, that either are not being supervised because they have a capias, or they're being supervised elsewhere. So for the counties that have to follow through with taking over all this supervision, we were notified at least that the state would be providing us some funds. So our idea at this point was to get some teams formed, and we knew that we needed to get the input of our officers, because obviously, we had to get the buy-in from our staff. And actually, one-third of the office volunteered to participate in these groups that we formed. We looked at hiring, and we, the state said that they would give us money for what they considered to be twelve officers at seventy-five thousand dollars a person, but we knew that that was not going to be able to really be the amount that we could pay an officer based on the fringe benefits that come with that.
Is that on a, like, a two-year basis to get things going?
Right.
Okay. The state normally doesn't do it endlessly.
Correct. It's for two years initially, similar to the PSI grant that we got when they stopped the PSI services, the Pre-Sentence Investigation Services.
That's been going on for quite a while.
Right. And are they still funding that?
We don't anticipate that this will end.
Are there, so the PSI is still being fully funded?
Yes.
Well, not fully funded.
Well, I mean, not just salaries.
They weren't as near with their offers for PSI as they were with this grant.
Okay.
This is far better.
I agree. So we looked at hiring, we looked at training, which is on-the-job policy changes, policy development, because we're taking on offenders that we've no, that we've not supervised before, which includes sex offender supervision, interstate compact supervision, where we have to deal with offenders that are leaving the area to go to another state for supervision, and basic supervision itself, because the county probation department has always had intensive supervision probation, as well as misdemeanor probation. So we knew that we had to do some policy development, we had to change our current policies that we were looking at, and then we also had to look at our space issues. We have been in touch with Mr. Cordez along the way, so he was advised of this, and we've been working with Karen Davis as well, as looking as to what we need as far as additional space. Right now, we have been able to use the space that we have available, and we should be okay, probably for about another five officers. If we grow bigger than that, though, we will probably need some more office space developed. In addition to this space, we needed equipment for all of these new officers as well. It's not just a body coming in the door, it's desks, it's office supplies, it's computers, it's phone lines, because we're out of phone lines right now over at the probation department. It's also safety equipment for each of these officers, which includes vests, firearms, handcuffs, et cetera. So...
You're good.
No, you're good. The statistical data, I've kind of already went over a little bit. What we've been allotted, then, is nine hundred thousand per year for a two-year grant cycle, which works out to one point eight million, which was initially, it's more than what they initially indicated to us. Initially, they indicated they would give us sixty thousand, and that that amount went up after they realized that not all of the counties across the state were going to be doing this. There are counties that currently do not have any county probation department, and those counties have been given an option to contract with the state for continued services or to develop their own department. Luckily, we had our own department. As I said, we'll be getting about eight hundred cases. They're going to be actually transferring to us in January of 2020, between January and February. And that includes physical files coming over to our office. The APA has been very gracious to us. They've offered us assistance, training, help with our policy development. We've been in contact with the supervisors over there, who've indicated that they will work with us. This is not across the state. This is very unique to Lorraine County. We have a very good working relationships with the Adult Parole Authority. We've been told that some of the counties, the Adult Parole Authority will not even speak to them or help them. So we've been very fortunate with that. However, we still have a little bit of a headache with this and need some Advil, because, you know, we need to look at, how are we going to get all this in place before January of 2020? So to date, we have hired three officers that began this month. We have five more scheduled to begin in September. We're also going to be posting for a new supervisor spot as well, because this is creating a whole new unit within our department. And we'll have an additional support staff that we're looking to hire in October. And then we have two more officers from recent vacancies that we have to fill. We've also got a teleworking process for the PSI writers that is going to be a pilot project from September to November, that will help them free up space, because they are up in a cubicle area on the third floor, and it's not really conducive for them to make phone calls, to write, and be cramped in this small area. And we have also been in the conversation with the county for more offices on the third floor and the need for more phone lines.
Can you explain the teleworking for the PSI? What are you, are you going to put them somewhere else?
They will actually be working at home two days a week.
Oh, okay.
And then we have, we've been working with Ernie Smith with IT to encrypt the data for a computer, for them to have a laptop to take, and then they will be at the office three days a week. But it's not all of the officers. It's just, I think there's about four, four of the seven will be doing this.
And the reason for that is space?
Mm-hmm, yes. They were originally, we had cubicle, a cubicle area up on the third floor for them, and it was not working out at all. There was no privacy. It was a very small and very open space where they just, it was, they were not being able to do their work the way they needed to, and to get the reports done timely for the courts. So they had originally moved down to offices in the basement, and now we need those offices for the supervising officers that we're hiring.
I know, we did the work on the courthouse, and maybe the Administrator can add some comments, that we made sure that, you know, we did the right things on the third floor there in preparation for future growth, and looks like future growth is a lot sooner.
Well, we added a floor. It was substantially more expensive project, because we did decide they had the third floor after the architect indicated that we did not do it at that point, we probably wouldn't be able to do it at some later point due to the extensive renovations. But we actually, the Court Administrator at the time wanted cubies up there, and we just added the cubies. It was really just shelled-out space. That was something, I never quite understood when we were doing that work, why we did that, but we had all these large rooms, and then we had cubies on the third floor. We're doing something with that now, right? We're going to work on that? What do we?
No, we're going to put PSI back up there.
Yeah. So we've got to do some renovations up there, right? We're going to do some changes?
Possibly. I mean, that's what we're hoping.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay, so we're working on that.
At least a small area of it, maybe even keep some more area to be built out at a later day.
Okay.
In case we grow further.
The plan is for the teleworkers to eventually be moved into office space? It's just temporary teleworking, or what?
No, it's, due to the fact that they'll only be there, they'll only be at home--
You have to get closer to the microphone.
You've got to get closer to the mic.
You've got to get closer. There you go.
If, if they work a couple days a week at home, and we stagger them, there's not as many people there, so it's easier to make phone calls and not have a lot of, you know, you have a lot of background noise and things when you're trying to make phone calls. They have to call--
You have background noise at home, too.
Right, but you don't have four or five people trying to make calls at the same time right next to you in cubicles.
Yeah, I'm just curious. Do we do much teleworking here in the county? I just have concerns about teleworking.
No, but, but it's 2019.
I understand that.
It's, you know, companies have gone virtual. It's not where you work, it's the amount of work you do.
And that's why we're doing it as a pilot project.
Yeah, these are government workers. It's a little bit different. So there's accountability.
I will suggest--
We can forward you the policy that we've developed on it. It's pretty, it's pretty strict.
Okay.
I will suggest that if we have to, we run out of space at the courthouse, my biggest concern, which we experienced a couple years ago, is if we develop another location, is security.
Well, that's what I mean. We're not securing them in their homes.
But they're not meeting, they're not meeting with clients--
Right.
--in their homes. They're doing the administrative work.
Right.
I'm assuming that the days that they're coming to the courthouse will be visit days, and then they're doing the administrative work off-site.
Correct.
Is that right?
So it's the visit work that requires them to have the contact and thus the security.
And the pre-sentence investigation writers only do interviews. They do an initial interview with the person, and they do not see the person again. The interview is done at the old courthouse by an officer that is there, and then that officer will then complete the report, mainly through the computer. It's mainly verifying data, going online, getting information that needs to be verified for the report.
And isn't the portal actually monitored for usage time? And, I mean, there's documentation that's provided for, for workers who work from home like that. It's not just kind of, yeah, I threw a few hours in there.
Right. And obviously, our judges have the same concerns, which is why, right now, it's just a three-month pilot. And if it does not work out, or we find that there are problems, then it will, it will be discontinued.
So if there's IT concerns, they'll bring those here to us, or are we going to be like Best Buy and go to their home and, you know? I'm just wondering where we're going with all this.
We did write that into the policy, that, no, it, everything is, they have one computer that we're supplying them, a laptop, and that's our property, and we maintain it, and everything else, we're not supplying any printers or scanners or anything of that nature. All that work needs to be done when they're in the office.
Yeah, I just get concerned, and I'm sorry to express these concerns today during the presentation, but, you know, I guess we've learned from previous experiences, and I just, I get concerned when, you know, people are taking laptops that have, you know, very important information on it, you know, leaving things in a car, car gets broken into, the laptop disappears, all of those concerns.
And, and we have some of those same concerns, and we discussed it with Ernie, and actually, that computer that they have is just a porthole into the computer that they have, their desktop. So there's no data on that laptop at all.
Good.
So it's all web-based?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Got it.
Other questions on that?
Now, I'm sorry to interrupt there.
No, that's fine. That's why we're here today, to answer your questions. We act, we act, nothing further.
No, go ahead.
We actually do, after we got together and got over the initial shock of all of this and put our minds around it, got our teams together, we, we actually think that there are some benefits to having all of the supervision with the Lorraine County Adult Probation Department. Obviously, there's a continuity of services. It's much closer for the people that are being sentenced by our judges to go right across the street instead of having to drive out to near the jail, which is where the Adult Parole Authority is. It allows us more control over those caseloads for the recommendations that are being made to the court for the people that would be going into treatment versus incarceration. It allows us to expand on our specialized docket. All of the officers will be with our department now, and we are looking at getting additional help for the Veterans Court and for the startup of the Mental Health Court. The drug testing can be centralized in the same quality, and we're actually in talks with having the county provide all of our drug testing for us, at a cost to us that would go back to the lab, and hiring an additional person to cover the one that the SAMSA grant originally covered, the part-time female. And we also see that this can lead to a reduction, hopefully, in the jail population. We have to use, with our department, the way that we're audited, we have to use evidence-based treatment and cognitive behavioral programming. We are audited very heavily, I think probably more than the Adult Parole Authority was, and we believe by having all of these offenders with us, we can get them more of those types of treatment. And we hopefully, we hopefully plan to see a reduction in recidivism for the county. So at this point, we're now feeling like, yeah, we can do this, and it's going to be okay. And I told the probation department that our new motto is that we make things happen.
Nice.
And that's what we are going to do, that's what we've been doing, that's what we're going to continue to do. And obviously, we will continue to work with you all in any way that you need us, or any information that you need from us.
I'm wondering about the clients, that why were they being seen by adult parole? They were, did they come out of the state prison, and they had local charges, or why, why were they being seen by both?
Right now, the way that the offenders are supervised are based on the ORAS score, which is the Ohio Risk Assessment System. And if they were, there's a score that scores them as a low, as a moderate, or as a high or very high supervision. All of the moderate and higher supervisions were going to Lorraine County Adult Probation. All the sex offense cases, the interstate compact, and the lower supervision levels that were considered a basic supervision were being sent to the Adult Parole Authority. And that delineation was made, as far as long as I can remember. I started in 1989, and the state always had those basic cases, and Lorraine County Adult Probation had intensive probation, probation services. So the Adult Parole Authority will continue to supervise the offenders being released from the prison, all of the parole and post-release control offenders, and that's the only offenders that they're going to be having. They, I think they're going to have the ones that are incoming from other states, we'll do the outgoing to other states, they'll do the incoming, but they'll have all parole and post-release control, and we'll have all the community control and judicial release.
Okay.
Do you have any idea how that caseload's going to transition in January and February? I mean, do they, like, there's a drop-dead date and everything? It is? And it all shows up the next day?
Yes.
Wow, okay.
We'll, we'll arrange a date as to when we go and get the files. We're developing a form right now that the officers with adult parole can fill out, kind of a check-off list, because to get a brand-new case walking in the door, you don't know anything about them.
Right.
Some of the files are thin, some are thick, and that, that check-off sheet will at least have their name, their address, phone number, if they've had any violation behavior, what they're on supervision for, if they have drug alcohol needs, mental health needs, and give the person that's getting that case an idea of what they're going to be dealing with. But it's, yeah, it's going to be a little chaotic initially.
There is a good, another good side to this, in that nobody at APA is losing their job, so it's not, these are new jobs coming to the county. So this, one point eight million that we're going to get for the next two years is, is added jobs to this, to this county.
Excellent.
Can you speak a little bit about some of those who are on probation or dealing with treatment issues, alcohol, drug, drug-related? What's the working relationship been like with, I know we just recently merged the two boards. Have you been working closely with them, and do you plan on working closely with the new merged board?
Absolutely. We'll, we'll continue working with them. And for the offenders that are currently in treatment, we're not going to change the currently in treatment, we're not going to change the person that they're receiving the treatment from. We don't want to disrupt the services that they're receiving, and we're gonna continue, the Adult Parole Authority uses the same services we do, the same, we only have so many treatment agencies in the county, so we are going to absolutely continue working with them.
I was just going to encourage you, if you see areas where you think it can be strengthened or improved, I would certainly hope that you would take that to the, to the new Mars Board and express those concerns. There's certainly more than enough ample revenue that's coming in to some of those accounts, that should be going back into the community, instead of being rolled over from year to year, and we need to be helping people and reduce the recidivism.
We have been dealing with them with an ATP grant that they have, and a SOAR grant. Both of those are for mental health and for drug addiction, so, yeah, we plan to continue that relationship, absolutely.
Any other surprises coming down the road from the state?
We hope not.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we love unfunded mandates, yeah.
Yeah. You know, your, your pathway, though, looks like you've really executed everything well. I would think that that transition's gonna be manageable. Yeah, a little chaotic initially, but, but you've got a good roadmap ahead of you, and I think everyone who worked on that should be commended.
Sounds like your staff's buying in, and that's important, too.
Right, that was, that was the big thing, was to, and that's why initially, when we sat down with the management team and, and talked, I, I told them, I said, we have to include the staff on this. We have to get their input. They're the ones that are supervising.
Yeah.
So, they've been, they've been great. And the, we have training officer teams for the new POs, and the new probation officers, and the probation officers have told me, the new ones have said how much they really like and appreciate the two officers that they're teamed up with, to help them learn, because they have to learn a new job, as well as a new caseload, so.
Are you still looking for more people, and if so, what kind of credentialing are you looking for?
The probation officer would need a four-year degree, or at least eight years of experience in the field, and we do the interview process, and it's, other than that, we, we will be posting again, probably in about a month.
Okay, then after the two-year grant, transitional grant runs out, then that then becomes the obligation of the-
Hopefully, they continue the grant.
Correct.
Hopefully, they'll continue. They, they have continued the 407 and 408 grant over the years, although they are, they consolidated. They, that's a practice that we've noticed. I think five years ago, there were, in the 407 grant, there were four different departments that they were funding, and now they've had us consolidate those down to two. And I, I think eventually, those grants will be just one grant. And they have changed from, they used to be a yearly grant, and now they're two years, so. But the funding amount has- The funding amount has not changed. Stays the same? Yes. Yes.
Good. Excellent, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do need a resolution, though. Approving a subsidy probation funding grant agreement amount of 1.8 million with the Ohio Department of Rehab and Correction Division of Parole, Community Services Bureau of Community Sanctions.
Okay, so move.
Second?
Discussion.
Aye.
Ms. Gossi.
Aye.
Sweden.
Aye.
Another presentation on tap this morning?
Another one.
Okay.
Clinton Avenue Restoration Project. Matt?
Good morning, Board. Thank you. Today is kind of part two of managing stormwater along the Clinton Avenue ditch system. Last week, we had the pleasure of kind of going over the much more naturalized stormwater controls that were put in at Lake Avenue. Today, you'll actually see what I was explaining about as kind of a hole in the ground, to be able to hold back the stormwater. And we're gonna have Matt Arnold, our stormwater technician, be able to go over the construction of the project, and what it's expected to do for us, and a little bit how it works with upstream the Lake Avenue, as well as what results we expect to have downstream with the Sheffield Township Hall. Again, this is part of an overall system that we've been working on for several years now. And so, with that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Arnold, your stormwater technician. Thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Wrong one.
They're in there backwards today.
Good morning. I'm Matt Arnold, Lorraine County Stormwater Technician, and this is our Clinton Avenue Stormwater Management Facility. It's a detention basin located on North Ridge Road and Clinton Avenue intersection. It's downstream of our Lake Avenue project, which was presented last week, so they kind of work in succession to each other. I'd like to thank our partners that helped us. We've got the county commissioners, the Port Authority, the land bank. KEM is our engineer that helped design the project, and then D and, D and M Earthmoving was the contractor who dug and, and created the project. This is a picture of what it looked like before construction. It was kind of a channelized ditch, running through kind of an open field of grass kind of deal, next to the Board of Elections. Sheffield Township, the Board of Elections, local residents and businesses were experiencing some floods in the area, so we decided to move forward this project to help mitigate some of that. Here's what the, there's like a pipe that goes under the ground through that field, farther around that end, and it was conveying the water from that open part of the ditch that you saw in the last picture, down to an outlet at the end of that field. And it kind of just flushed the water through there pretty quickly, didn't retain any of it or anything. There's another pre-construction picture, where they started grubbing and clearing. That's just like an outlet and a kind of dilapidated catch basin at the edge of the parking lot for the Board of Elections. Part of that was fixed during the project as well. And here's some during construction pictures. That shows the top of the outlet structure. There's kind of a drive that goes behind the Board of Elections over to Gargis Hall, and so, we put a lot of big stone there and compacted it. That way, anybody that decides to drive over there, it can be done safely. There's also a guardrail installed there, so no cars fall off into the ditch or anything of that nature.
Good plan.
And there's the, the detention basin becoming a detention basin. June was a very wet month, so there was some complications with a lot of water filling it up. There's the outlet structure. You can see on the far end of the picture, in the background is the old pipe, and then closer to us is the new corrugated plastic pipe. So, we, we rerouted the water through a new pipe. The old pipe is still there and sort of functions. We didn't tear it all the way out, just because it could have caused more problems than removing it than to just leave it in place.
Is that where the access road is, over top of that?
Correct.
So, you're driving over a plastic pipe?
It, it's been, all that stone and stuff protects the pipe?
It does.
It, it acts as a culvert.
Yes.
It goes underneath. You, you see it all the time like that.
Yeah, the plastic?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. In fact, that plastic will last, it, we call it plastic, but it's a PVC derivative. It's, it's, it's better than the, the, the metal pipe. Definitely, but everything's better than clay. But, but, it'll outlast, if it's cleaned correctly, it'll outlast that, that metal pipe that's over there, or any corrugated steel.
I'll take your word for it.
So, as I mentioned, some of the issues encountered was, June, we had 25 inches of rain, so that, that was a battle. Also, we did four test holes, bored, four test holes on the site to see the soil conditions ahead of doing the project, and didn't foresee some of the debris that was buried there. We think the site might have been used as an old dumping site or something, so there's a lot of concrete and asphalt, and even a rear end of a truck found out there.
Oh, my gosh.
It looked like they, looked like they used it as a fill area at one time. More than likely, when the Combi, the old Combi Gas Building, as we know the Board of Elections now, because that was the site of the former Combi Gas Building, and Gargis Hall was, was built, they more than likely used it as debris fill-
Yeah.
-as they moved in on that, that, that channel. So, we had to excavate all that, that fill out of there.
There's some more debris higher.
Wow.
So, the buried debris increased the project costs a little bit by 45,000, and the extremely wet conditions extended the amount of time it took to finish the project. And then, here we are, almost finished. You can see at the far end, North Ridge Road, where the water comes in, under North Ridge, and then it flows through kind of a channel that is created through the middle of that. And then, during high flow events, it starts to fill up the detention basin to retain it, which prevents downstream erosion and things, because we're retaining that water and slowing the velocity. It also helps with flooding issues, because the water's, instead of all of it going through at one time, we're reducing the amount and slowly trickling it out of this detention basin downstream. And there's the outlet structure, so, giant concrete outlet essentially. And that's where that pipe you saw, that it ties into that.
And Commissioners, that, go back one more on that slide. That, that is made to be a top-over structure, so that if, if in fact, we do have some peak events, and it does fill up, which isn't anticipated, to be honest with you, it's made that the, the excess water will flow right over the, the roadway there, and, and go into the, on the side of the ditch. So, it's designed that way. So, should that ever happen, it's anticipate, this would not be a mistake if that happened. That would be a design issue to, to allow that, to allow that to happen, because the water is being held back and restricted in the flow. But there may be, you know, the opportunity, when we take so much water, that it has to top over. That, that is actually why the guardrail was put there. There was never a guardrail there before, so we had to make provisions, so that if it was flowing over, I wasn't so much worried about anybody driving into the ditch. The ditch has been there without a guardrail for decades.
Be like a flash flood situation, right?
Right.
There's that one again. So, it can hold about 90% of the 100-year storm, which equates to 3.6 acre feet, or a little over a million gallons of water. And we've received several calls from residents saying that it, it has helped already with the flooding issues that were occurring.
That's great.
And it potentially reduces the quantity and frequency of the flooding in the area. And that's, that's the completed project. There's still a little bit of green growth that we're trying to get in the bottom. We're just waiting for a little drier conditions to get that grass to sprout there and not rot or wash out.
Can you, uh-
Excellent.
Can you go back a frame?
Okay.
Keep going back.
Other way?
I wanna go back to the original look. There you go, right, there. Now, just capture that in your mind, and now go to the finished project.
Yeah.
There you go.
Wow. I would love some before and after pictures of this project, and especially the Lake Avenue project, but we need to have that on our walls, especially, we had our ditch hearing yesterday, and I wish the, the people that were in the audience could have seen what we are able to do. I mean, that was amazing, what you did. I mean, this is great, too, but nobody will ever see that back in the woods, you know, the Lake Avenue project, so I'd love to have a nice, big poster.
Well, this one's gonna be a bit of a, and we'll get some, we'll get some photos for you. The, this one's gonna be a bit of a maintenance challenge, as I've told Don. I, I don't want this area overrun. It's, it's, it's got a lot of visibility. We're starting to develop part of our, our campus approach out there, because we, it's no secret any longer, and I'm, I'm just about finished with the purchase. I've, I purchased all the property west of the Board of Elections for expanding the Board of Elections, because they're, they've overgrown the building they're in, and they need training and storage facilities. So, you, you've known that, we've been talking about it. So, those things are just about completed, and we have some plans for the area west, and then we have some other ideas that we're working on. So, I, usually, these things are not as visible as this area is, so we need to, we need to do quite a bit of maintenance to keep the, the greens, the green down. So, I don't know what we have planned for this, but we have to come up with a plan. This is a little bit new for us. But it is beautification while also doing retention of, of stormwater. Plus, we're trying, we're, we're obtaining properties even further downstream in Sheffield Township for an additional add-on to this project that'll help us, but it'll also aid the city of Lorraine, because we're pushing more and more, as we talked about.
Because this comes into 36th Street ditch, correct?
Well, as we develop a lot more impermeable surface out in the unincorporated area, we're shoving a lot more stormwater towards the lake. It's easy to say it's their problem. In some respects, maybe it is, in some respects, maybe it isn't. But I know one thing, there's a lot more flow going in, into those ditches towards the lake than, than used to be going to, towards them, so I think we have some responsibility to try to mitigate some of that along the water course. And Mr. Marancheck is intimately knowledgeable in what's going on down in that area, if you want to speak to that, Don.
Yeah, as we continue to develop, we've definitely discovered two things. One is that a lot of the development that was allowed to go prior to the stormwater district, and even prior to erosion sediment control rules, and the, the stormwater detention basins, comprehensive stormwater management, water just gets pushed, gets pushed hard, and gets pushed fast downstream, towards our rivers, towards our lake. The other thing that has occurred is, and that we've seen, and you've seen, Board, every time we've done a ditch improvement project, the maintenance on these ditches and these drainage ways just has not been there. So, what has happened is oftentimes, we've had maybe stormwater detention and quality by accident, because the ditches are no longer working, and we are always taking a look at what happens when we clean these drainage ways out. Now, all of a sudden, the water that wasn't able to get through is able to get through quickly. So, this Clinton Avenue has been a great demonstration of some things that we can do on existing systems, to begin to control that water, to improve and protect the environment, and also improve and protect the quality of life for our residents that have been here, and that have been here for long periods of time. And we continue to work along those lines.
And you saw that when they did the other project that we, we, we previewed last week, where they, they, they were serpentine-ing-
Yeah.
-the, the, and that, that does a lot of different things, but one of the things, it also slows the flow, and it, it lets it spread out, and you get a lot, a lot less channeling going straight. That's, a lot of our ditches have that problem with, and a lot of the channeling has been purposeful, by, by people that are trying to dry out land that has been wet, so they, especially on farm land, they'll, they'll try to channel it, condense it down. All they're doing is, is increasing the flow, and then the channels get deepened, and you get less fall, and you get sediment, and so, what they did is they more naturalized those things, and, and bring them back to a condition that improves water quality, but also includes retention and detention of those, those waters. But hopefully, over the next, that project in Sheffield Township, probably, collecting of the land is probably gonna take several years to come.
Easily. We have about 40 different landowners total. We've acquired several already through voluntary sales and/or actions by partners with the land bank on delinquent taxes.
It's a paper development, paper lots that are never gonna be built. Since we started buying up some of them, because there's, some of them were in tax foreclosure delinquencies. I think these are like, people bought $100 lots 25 years ago.
Yeah, one of the foreclosures, best I could calculate, they hadn't paid taxes in over 30 years, and they owed us $300 in bad debt.
Right, it was just, so, but, but, since we started buying the lots, now they think they, they hit gold, because we want the land, so, you know, they're, they're asking, some of the folks are asking ridiculous prices. So, as we told them, we'll just sit and wait it out. It's, it's not, we, we don't actually 100% need that project right now. It's one of those that would be another enhancement project. So, we're just, we'll procure the land as it becomes available at a, at a responsible cost.
And, again, we've already seen some positive results from these two projects, and have gotten some very positive feedback from the people that- gotten some very positive feedback from the people that have had to live with the flooding from the Clinton Avenue ditch in the township, so.
That's the best news.
Yes, it is. So thank you very much for your funding and your support of these projects.
Doing a good job in improving the quality of life for a lot of folks. I, I see Patty here. Do you want to say a few words, Patty, if you'd come up to the podium, being the fiscal officer there in Sheffield? And I know you and I have had these conversations about the flooding down in the area, and, and hoping this is going to help out for the, for the neighbors, and for the town hall, and everything else.
Right, you know, time does pass us by. Terry Good came to visit us to be introduced, not Terry, Jerry Good, from, from, when he first came, and you brought him, you had just taken office the first time, and you had experienced the flooding that we were experiencing for years, and you said, we're going to get something done. And lo and behold, we're still here, and something's being done. And so, on behalf of the township, thank you so much. We really want to see Phase Three move along, because that will assure us.
Yeah, talk to some of those residents.
When, when that ditch starts getting to the top, like it did in June, when they got all that rain, everyone ran to their spots, you know, everyone knows what to do, all the pumps got in place, and we just watched, and it didn't happen. So it was to the tippy-top, but it didn't happen. Just to throw in there, you know, we need to do something about the Packer ditch, too. So we need to move forward and, and find a way to solve that problem.
The, you need to apply for a grant.
Well, you know, it's privately owned, and so that's our biggest problem there.
Well, but this, this, I will tell you, we're, we're, we've done two massive district projects in Sheffield Township right now, we're, we're moving on. So you need to, you need to have the township apply for grant funds through the SWAC. We'll, we'll keep a, we'll keep a look on those lots back, you know where we are, back there.
I definitely know.
As they become available, we're not going to lose sight of that, but we have some other district projects now, we're doing up, we're focusing on Kelnar, and a few other ones, because we've spent a considerable amount of money in Sheffield Township, and actually, I will say that Sheffield Township and Alleea Township, because this alleviated some of the issues in Alleea Township, too, but we don't have a lot of money, and we need to spread it around a few of the other areas.
I got it. I think really, we need to partner with Lorraine on the Packer ditch issue, because most of that water is coming off of Fifty-Seven.
And that's the one that's running through those backyards there.
Goes through those backyards, and then when they develop back there behind where Southview is, where the old Builder Square was, that, that's the project that they used to drain that whole area, and it just created a problem. And originally, it was a railroad right-of-way, and that's how it got sort of mixed up in the fray.
And there was no, no, no improvements when they tore Southview down over there, and...
None.
Okay.
So, anyway, thank you so much, on behalf of the township.
Sounds like a good grant project for next year's SWAC.
Yeah, it's, anyway, thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks, Patty.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. We're making progress, you know, it's, got to take those incremental steps along the way, but hopefully, it's improving quality of life over there for a lot of folks and folks.
A little bit at a time, after hundreds of years of not...
Yeah.
Too much building and not enough maintenance.
Do you have any presentations yourself, Madam Clerk, or should we just go to resolutions?
Not today.
Okay.
I will pass. Under resolutions, number one, investments.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Preparations.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
No advances or repayments, requisitions.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Travel.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Billings.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated on the summary sheet concluded in Jersey County County Commission.
Good morning, County Administrator Jim Cordez.
Thank you, Commissioner. I do have a number of issues, ongoing labor negotiations with United Auto Workers, also steelworkers, met with, both those parties were met with, so I want to update you on those things. Finalizing the purchase of real estate, I did discuss one of them here, but we have others that we're working on. One pending legal matter, and some potential new hires in some of our departments, and I think that's it. So all those topics will allow bond to the Sunshine Act for executive session discussions, or act at the conclusion of our regular board when we go into executive session, we talk about those matters that I've explained. Thank you.
Approved with the reading of the minutes on August fourteenth.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Under sanitary, approve an interim two-year agreement for Lorraine County Water and Wastewater Engineering Services with K. McCarden Associates, Inc., in the amount of two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand on an as-needed basis for a twenty-month period, authorized engineering to execute on behalf of our prosecutors approvals.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Public comment?
Anyone wishing to make public comment?
Aye.
Oh, I thought I did.
No.
I'm still here.
Okay, Sherry had her public comment, she wants to be recognized.
It was "I."
"I," it was "I," for the record. Anyone wishing to address the board this morning? Seeing none.
Okay, just want to make sure.
I don't see anybody.
Mr. Cordez.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do have two quick pieces of business this morning. The first is, I, I need to get a board signature, so we'll just need to make, approve for, for Matt to sign this. This is, we just approved like nine-hundred-thousand dollars' worth of security upgrades to the cameras and security system at the jail, but all of those security measures have to be approved by the state to go in. So, you know, there's ninety-two pages of things here, they've approved all of our installation, and agreed with everything we want to do out there, so we can get all those upgrades underway, we've been talking about them for a significant amount of time, and as, as you're aware, because you did approve that earlier this year to our capital plan, I just want to get, get it signed and get it back to the state, so we can get the work underway. So we just pass something that they just want a signature on it. I don't know if we need to get a resolution agreeing with it, I don't know.
I believe that was already done by requisition.
We did it by, we did the, we did the vendor by requisition, I don't know if we agreed with the signing of the state documents by, in that resolution. I wasn't sure, Madam Clerk, so.
I don't know, I didn't, I haven't looked at it.
I, I didn't know we had to sign this, I thought the state would say it's fine, and but they sent back some documents that needed signing, so.
I just think it's important to point out to the public, and Jimmy, you know this all too well, that, you know, when we had the tax increase that was supposed to benefit the jail, that we still find ourselves having to supplement the costs over there, what, do they tune, about four million?
Well, when they, when they, I was the only one here when they passed the original sales tax for the jail, and...
For five tries?
It was four, five tries.
But lacking them?
It was catch and release back in the nineties. The, the, I have to commend both newspapers at the time, they were partners in getting that passed, they were, they would take the pictures of them coming in the door, and about an hour later, coming out the door, and put them on the front page of paper, taxpayers were unwilling to support a tax increase at the time. The, the, but it was always known that the quarter percent was going to be wholly inadequate to support jail operations completely. It did for a while, the, the, but there'll always be a need for general funds subsidies for the jail. The, the, the folks at jail do a really good job of keeping costs down, but the security system out there was antiquated years ago, the video was poor, the corrections officers in the local jails these days are basically running a maximum sentence facility, maximum security facility. Usually, the people that are not getting bonded out are the worst of the worst offenders. Now, I say offenders, most of them haven't been adjudicated, so I don't want to prejudge, but they're, they're in their charge with the most serious of offenses, and if they, when adjudicated, usually if they're, if they're found guilty of the charges, they're sent to medium and maximum security facilities. And our corrections officers at the local level are dealing with that, and we don't really have a medium and maximum security facility. And, and so they're, they're in a dangerous environment. And I was, I, I was appalled at how poorly the security systems were, were working, and how often they were failing, and, you know, we worked on the lock systems, we worked, and we needed to work on the camera systems, and we, we've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to make improvements out there, but the truth of the matter is, we have, we have an elephant hiding under the carpet, and it's been hiding under the carpet for a decade, and that is, we need a new jail.
Every county is facing this right now.
Right.
I mean, it's insane.
And, and that new jail's going, the cost between sixty and eighty million dollars, at least. The, the, there's been initiatives with the state to try to partner with the state, as they've done with schools and so forth, to, to figure out these local jail situations. They're, they're expensive to build, and they're even more expensive to operate. But, you know, I, I commend the folks out there for working with whatever they, they've been able to work with, but you've seen the need, and you've responded to it as best you can. When funds became available with, with the sales tax, a couple of years ago, we've been doing the capital improvements out there to at least get some more life out of what we had. But remember, that's just kicking the can down the road.
Kind of like our parking garage.
Kind of like the parking garage, but this is, this is, this is a little bit more serious.
Higher level, of course.
And, and, and so the money was provided, and we need to start having dialogue out here about these things, at least put them in, put them into, into the dialogue, into the vernacular, so people know that it just didn't appear down the road, and we didn't have any appreciation of these problems. We, we've had that understanding for some time, and we're trying to address those things, but the, the solutions are money, they're always money, resources. But, but sooner or later, we're going to have to address that jail in a, in a bigger way.
Yeah, just locks alone, I think we paid for over there at the jail, what, four-hundred-thousand dollars?
Commissioner, you're, you're in the ballpark, I think it was well over half a million.
Half a million.
I thought it was close to eight.
There were some other enhancements with the lock, but the locks themselves...
Huge.
Were, they, they were, they were buying, I, I think they were buying pieces on eBay, they were so old, because you couldn't get parts for them, to try to keep them, keep them up and running, and, and again, they, they, they self-helped and done what they could, and housed for a long, long period of time. This security camera and video and so forth upgrades was long needed, this isn't crying wolf, they, they needed them for a long time.
It was grainy, it was hard to see.
Yeah.
And, and they're dealing with very, very dangerous people. People think of the local jail as, you know, the DUIs and the holding cell, no, no. No, I'm sorry, there's very dangerous people at the jail there.
So we're going to, it's kind of the same thing we do for DH when we get these grants, but we're just going to authorize Board of Commissioners to execute contract with ODRC for the security upgrade systems at the jail, and I'm going to include Phase One through Five, so we don't have to come back.
Okay, sounds great. Because I think they're only doing, what, one through three right now?
This is one through three, but four and five is included in all of it, but they just still have a signature basis for the state, so I'll just include all of it.
Okay, yeah, make that motion.
I'll second.
Any further discussion, Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
I also have the one from Children Family First.
This is sweet. What am I doing here? I'm looking at Jim, and he's got paperwork, and I'm just, right over, just have him sign and give it back to me. Ms. Sueda?
I said aye.
Okay.
Yeah.
Motion carried.
Aye, aye.
Mr. Cordez.
I, I have a, I have a grant here for around twenty-nine thousand dollars for the Children Family First Council, that we just need to have Commissioner Lundey sign, and it needs to be accepted by the board, so we can send it down to the state with the administrative agent for Children Family First. I got a little ahead of myself, had him sign it this morning, and didn't know it was going to be on next week's agenda, I had it in my stack, and so it's always nice to get money, that's what we're doing.
Approving and granting agreement on behalf of Lorraine County Children Family First Council with the Hall Department of Development Disabilities for the Help Me Grow Early Intervention Program Outreach Activities fiscal year twenty in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars effective retroactive July first, two thousand nineteen through June three of twenty-twenty.
I would make that motion.
Second. Discussion, Mr. Lundey.
Aye.
Ms. Kowski.
Aye.
Ms. Sueda.
Aye.
Hey. We got you in there.
Yeah. She must think I'm going to cause trouble to Dave or something.
I think he just turned me off when he already said, you had your report done, and I was like, okay, just keep going.
Probably in the next week or two, we'll have the Crime Lab up for a presentation, some data. We, we do have a levy initiative coming onto the ballot, it's going to be the no-money campaign, because we have no money. I met with our director yesterday, and went over some issues with regard to the Crime Lab. It really needs to be moved from the lower level, we placed it in the lower level of this building, because we really, we didn't have any place to put it at the time, we were occupying the Broad Street Building as a temporary location for adult probation at the time, while we renovated the courthouse. It was more economical to put a new roof and HVAC units on the Broad Street Building, and then put our own people in there for almost two years, and save renting a lot of space at different locations than it was to leave the building sitting empty, and then needing those repairs anyway. So we have, we have structures of a good building, but it needs renovation inside and the front, which is where we intended on putting the Crime Lab. But the, the levy that supports the Crime Lab was originally passed in nineteen eighty-two, and it's collecting the same money that it collected in nineteen eighty-two. And it's wholly inadequate, it, it's, it's insufficient to support any real Crime Lab operations. For a number of years, we simply closed the Crime Lab and, and formed out services as best we could, and didn't have services. But years ago, we found it necessary to try to reactivate that and, and have something. We have about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year coming in on that levy, but it will not support ongoing operations or improving the operations and making a relocation, so that we can, we can have a real, I don't want to say a real service, they, they do provide a valued service, but we need, we need to enhance and better that for our community. So I'm going to, I'm going to keep trying to talk about it, I'm going to bring in talking points each week to discuss with you on, on what we can do. As, as you're aware, now we're doing the fingerprinting for all the police departments, for juveniles in Lorraine County, so the juveniles that, that have found themselves in some situations don't have to go into the local police department, there's segregation issues between the adults and the juveniles would happen to be fingerprinted, and a lot of that wasn't getting done, so now they, they come to the Crime Lab, and we have all of that available at the Crime Lab to do there, so it's, it's a community-wide service that we're doing, and I'm grateful that we're working with, with, again, as we did a long, long time ago, with the Adult Probation Department, to provide work for the community control in, with regard to the drug testing there, and other partners that we're trying to work with. But there's, there's a lot of more things that we need to be doing to support the first responders and the safety forces in Lorraine County that we have limited ability to do. So we're not asking for a big levy, and, and we're asking, you know, that, that we, we have a resource in this community that's about five-hundred-thousand dollars a year, and it won't go to the general fund, and it won't go to paying any of our employees, it'll strictly go to the lab services, to be able to put the lab in the Broad Street Building on, on Broad Street, give it, you know, the location it needs, and to fulfill a mission in this community. So I'll probably, next week, start that, and have Elizabeth up here for you guys to have more dialogue with her.
Will the evidence, housing of the evidence be part of that also?
It will be, and, and that's one of the things I talk, I spoke with her about yesterday, that that's kind of on hold right now, because one of the key elements of, of the evidence storage for the whole community was having somebody available to be able to take in...
Monitor.
Monitor, and, and, and let people in and out of the building, and the comings and goings. We were going to put that evidence storage in that Broad Street Building, there's, there's more than adequate room in the building, and they did, they did not need all that much room. But without being able to move the lab, there's nobody in, in that building, and being able to secure it, and the comings and goings of multiple police departments, court personnel, et cetera, is going to be very difficult and challenging, if not impossible. To explain, because we really haven't discussed this, I don't even know if we've... To explain, because we really haven't discussed this, I don't even know if we've discussed it out here, there is now a new requirement that all of the individual jurisdictions store their evidence themselves. So each municipality, each police department, Mr. Ennis is more up on this than I am, now has a requirement to, maybe in perpetuity, store evidence. Is that correct, Counselor?
Something like that, yeah.
Without shared space?
There is no centralized shared space right now for evidence storage, and, you know, some of that, it has to be stored, some of it has to be stored in environmentally-controlled space.
Climate-controlled.
So we have had dialogue about a community shared resource to limit the cost to all of the community to do this, and using, you know, the crime lab as a hub to provide that resource to all the jurisdictions in the community. But we gotta get the crime lab levy passed, and that'll be one of the services I believe we can adequately share with the community. So we'll be talking about that as part of our talking points, too. Otherwise, each one of these jurisdictions is going to have to provide for that themselves. And that's, it's not gonna, they're not gonna have the resources to do that.
No.
Or the space, or the, yeah.
Staffing.
Staffing.
Okay, that ends my report. I'll have more for you next week.
Mr. Ennis.
I have one matter of pending litigation and one matter imminent litigation to discuss with you in executive session.
Commissioners' report.
Well, this past Friday, I attended my CCAO County Commissioners Association in Columbus. We had J. P. Nassoff, not, not Steve, do you know that name? He's the president of Jobs Ohio. He attended our meeting and talked about economic development throughout the state of Ohio. Deb Lieberman from Montgomery County is also on our board, and she is from Dayton, is in her county, and she accepted our heartfelt concern, as we all have for her and her community, for the recent shooting that took place there. Saturday, Commissioner Sweetie and I golfed, she golfed, I don't know what I did, I could barely hit the ball, so I don't know what my problem was. But for Road to Hope, they had a fundraiser on Saturday, the event was sold out. Just goes to show you that, how much people in our community believe in what they're doing. They do a fantastic job in the recovering community. And what else did we do? Tuesday, we had our first public hearing for the Carpenter Ditch Project. We had a lot of people here, a lot of good dialogue, and I think the residents are very receptive to what we're trying to do, and they are in need of a solution to the flooding that has been occurring in their community for a very long time. We also had a stormwater meeting to discuss stormwater management regulations and erosion control regulations, so that was in my report.
Yeah, just, you know, we continue to work on helping our communities and homeowners have a better quality of life. The Carpenter's Ditch is a very important project, and I had a room packed here the other day with lots of residents, and so, as I've said before, we always try to do the best we can, working closely with everybody, and try to work on a fair and reasonable approach that works for everyone, and because of our ability through the stormwater fees to be able to waive assessments and waive maintenance fees, that's helped out tremendously. So we'll continue to work on that one, and hopefully find a solution here real soon. I just wanna commend our county prosecutor with the backpack program. I know I read the story this morning, it seems like some folks may be overreacting just a little bit, but, you know, I know that to be able to take money that's confiscated and be able to turn that into something positive for the community, I just wanna commend the prosecutor's office for doing that, and hopefully parents will eventually get access to all those backpacks for the kids to use at school. Also enjoyed the cookout recently that was hosted by the Elyria Dems over there at South Park. That was a really nice event. I think there was a wave of rain that came in, but once it cleared out. Just a really nice, traditional, old family picnic there, that was very enjoyable. Want to commend everyone involved with the Genesis House in their first wine tasting fundraiser that they held in Amherst, a very nice event, and can't say enough good things about the amazing work that folks do with Genesis House. Also, congratulations to all the organizers of the South Lorain Back to School Event that was held at Mexican Mutual, wasn't able to make it there, saw some of the Facebook posts, I think by my colleague, the one who gets to vote every once in a while, Sharon Sweetie, with the line that was kind of looped around there, a lot of folks coming in for the haircuts and backpacks and all the other things, I guess, that went with it. I know that we were helping to support that initiative as well, too, and just wanna commend the Coalition of Fair-Minded Citizens. I know they held their rally yesterday to confront hate, and I just can't say enough about how we just can't continue as a divided country, and we need to come together and work together, and always remember that we are all God's children. That completes my report.
Well, the commissioners and I had agreed a couple of weeks ago, and then I think we forgot about it. Every now and then, we get some really nice letters about folks who work for the county, and one of the memos we received, we said we wanted to read, said, "I'm sure you're aware, but I want to tell you what a gem you have driving one of your buses. A young lady by the name of DeeDee is such a pleasant person. I had to appear for jury duty this week, and am not familiar with downtown Elyria. I have an absolutely terrible sense of direction. In addition to that, cannot walk any distance. I parked in Washington, on Washington Avenue Lot, as instructed." We always wonder if people are reading those letters. She did. And it said that, from that point, she did take the bus, she just wanted to commend and say what a joy it was to have DeeDee driving that bus, so...
Didn't she flag her down or something?
There's more to this, yes. It says that she parked at the Washington, she caught the shuttle over to the Justice Center the first morning, and then when they were released for the day, everyone else started walking back to the lot, so she thought she would as well. And she said it wasn't long till she could not keep up, she was lagging behind, she was still trying to keep an eye on the others so that she wouldn't get lost, and she was feeling, just as she was getting really discouraged, here comes DeeDee with an empty bus. And so she had a great experience, and I think it's fun to share that, as well as the accolades to DeeDee. I ran into David Fink, Oberlin resident, who said he had intended to write a thank you to the Board of Commissioners, but asked me to pass along his deepest gratitude for the completion of the bike paths to the county line. He's an avid bike rider. He said that the previous rocky, gravelly, pebbly path was really difficult to navigate, and he doesn't know what it cost in tax dollars, but he's happy to pay his share, because he's really enjoying the completion of that path. We had our keep Lorain County Beautiful Pride Day wrap-up. We had flowers planted, over two thousand volunteers, tons of garbage were cleared, old tires removed, painting and park cleaning, and also mark your calendar, September seventh is the upcoming planting day. Friday was the United Way kickoff at Bass Ford. It was fun for the kids, because it was a sport theme, and most of the local sport mascots were there, from LCC, the Crushers, and the Cavs. They had hot dogs and a live radio broadcast through the event. It was well-attended, a little warm, but they had seating inside and out. Yes, the Road to Hope golf outing was fun, and Commissioner Kocowski did better than she said. She had some great hits, just the wrong direction.
Wow.
But they were good hits.
That's true, they did not go where I wanted them to.
Sunday, I did get to attend the South Lorain Back to School Festival at Mexican Mutual. They had a bouncy house, hot dogs, and lunch for everyone. It was incredibly hot, and I felt so badly for all those families standing in line there on the sidewalk in the heat, because the lobby inside was full. I think they had, I counted, maybe fourteen or fifteen barber and beautician volunteers doing the haircuts. I was concerned that at three-thirty, they were gonna lock the doors, but I was told they were gonna follow up on Monday. So that was great. And then later in the day, I attended the one that was at Central Park in Lorain, where the Northern Ohio Cosmetology School volunteered their time to do haircuts for the kids for back-to-school. Both of these events had face painting and other activities to kind of keep them entertained and amused, and they had two bouncy houses over there. The Elyria Democratic Picnic was a nice event. It was open, I did see a Republican candidate there, so it wasn't just an exclusively closed-door event. The Genesis Wine Tasting was a nice event over, I think they raised a fair amount of money there, and there was also a veterans' event prior to that over at Spectrum, honoring those who have been able to stay sober and how long, and talking about how the programs have been helping them. Monday was the Gold Star Ribbon Cutting over here in Elyria, the trophy shop, well-attended. He actually had two ribbon cuttings, because two chambers were there, Lorain County and the Power of Moore, and Pogies catered the event, so that was nice. In regard to our first hearing on the Carpenter Ditch, I think a public service announcement, since we can't send a disclosure, when those ditch letters go out, they imply that they're going to be assessed, and they are not, and so, and maintenance would be on the homeowners, they'd be responsible for it. We're not allowed to disclose that in the letters, and so it causes a lot of confusion. And when we went to the first walk of the ditch, you know, the folks are there, they've got the letters in hand, it does read like it's gonna be a problem on the homeowners, but it's not. So making greater awareness of that would be really a benefit, just in a public service announcement. And then last night, I did attend the Confronting Hate, Creating Community for Fair-Minded Coalition, and not to beat that thing to death, but I think it's important to recognize, it's not really about First Amendment rights, but rather selling controversial items at the fair. The Confederate flag has long been viewed as a controversial item, but in light of its most recent adaptation by white supremacy and hate groups, I'm personally gonna ask that the Fair Board would take a new view of this issue, to determine if the increased level of controversy surrounding the flag's implementation as a show of solidarity for those groups would validate the request to follow the lead of the Ohio State Fair and classify this as the controversial item that it has become known and recognized as. And lastly, I had a lot of calls early this morning from citizens very concerned over the fact that CEO David Hardy and Lorain Schools were going to stop the distribution of Lorain County Prosecutor Dennis Will's office's effort to send those supplies over to the school. I think that CEO Hardy has come under scrutiny for a lot of spending issues, and now they're going to spend school dollars to replace the backpacks that they're not going to accept, and a lot of folks are having just a real issue with this, that tomorrow's the first day of school, and these bags were stopped, the supplies were stopped. These are items you'll find sitting on shelves of our local department stores. Parents can determine for their child whether they view these as a risk or not, but withholding all those supplies seems to have backfired. So that ends my report. Thank you.
I think parents should at least have the option, similar to what they're doing in Elyria.
Absolutely.
But it's a local decision, I guess.
I did forget to put, but Tuesday at five-thirty, we were having our first hearing on the establishment of the Building Department.
Oh.
Great.
Okay.
Dog kennel coming up, too? That's on the regular agenda.
Okay.
Somewhere. You got it.
All right.
I just got to move. Board of Correspondents.
I would move that the reading be waived.
I'll second.
Discussion. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Sweetie?
Aye.
There you go. Your vote has been registered.
Yeah, every vote counts.
Every vote counts, that's right, so...
Nope, yours really doesn't. It doesn't, a third watch, someone really counts. Unless you two just, yes, you two disagree.
If it'll make you feel any better, when I came to this board as the rookie, I got picked on, too, so...
Okay, thank you, better.
Kind of tradition, I guess. Not necessarily good tradition, but it's tradition, so anyhow. So seeing no other business at this time, I've moved we go into executive session for the reasons stated by the county administrator and the assistant county prosecutor.
I'll second. Mr. Lundey?
Aye.
Ms. Kowski?
Aye.
Ms. Sweetie?
Aye.
This has been a broadcast of the recent Lorain County Commissioners General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Wednesday morning at nine-thirty at the Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, fourth floor, downtown Elyria. These are public meetings, and you are invited to attend. Agendas are posted prior to the meeting at www.loraincounty.us. Click on Departments to see the Commissioners page, then click on View Agenda for a printable copy of the agenda.